I'm here.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. At this time, we will just have the invocation. And then after that, we'll have the page of allegiance. So, I would like to pray today. If we'll take our time, just by your hair, just listen for a minute, please. Well, Lord, we just call upon you in this time of need. That you give us the strength and the will to bear our heavy burdens. As we go through this COVID-19 virus. We pray for our city and our community. And I need to grow with warmth and love and burden. Bless you and your divine compassion with be mindful of us and have mercy on us. While we struggle to comprehend life hardships. Just keep us there every day of watch until we can walk again. In some kind of form of normality. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Amen.
There we have the page of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. At this time, we will have a roll call. Group advice.
Here.
Shannon Watzke. Deborah Middleton.
Here.
Charles Evans here. Kendra Sellers.
Here.
Senatorm.
Here.
Please let it be documented at this time, we have one. Alderman. Absent, Shannon Watzke. Next on the agenda is the only item we have on the agenda. Is to about property. Today, we have somebody I think I guess with this Carol Mailer. And at this time. At this time, it, you know, it's. It's to order how we just discussed this, but I would like for each Alderman to. Say their name before they ask to speak. And we will continue with that process. And I'm going to open it up first with Carol Mailer, just said, let us. Talk to us about the reason why we want to have this meeting today. And we will move on.
Sorry, Charles. I know you guys are needing to get this taken care of. And I'm going to let Dana discuss what we are wanting and what we think we can do with you guys.
Okay. So, Charles in the council, this is Dana Robinson. I know you can't see me. I'm not on the video. And so, from what I understand, and you know, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I understand, the contract expired in mid-February. Or it ran its course and expired. And so, it wasn't completed before mom passed away. You know, so due to that, you know, we have some additional expenses. Legal fees and such. And then now we have some other people involved. And we, you know, we consulted a few other people that we know that are just kind of in. You know, I guess, property acquisitions, things like that. And. You know, what, what they have. What they have told us is that, you know, the property, when you sell property like this, it's supposed to be sold at its highest and best use. However, we know that the, you know, we know that you are on a short timeline. And I understand that there's some sort of permit that is due to expire. And we don't, you know, we don't have any intention of trying to drag anything out if you're still interested in our property. Because I don't, you know, since this contract has expired, you know, I don't know. You know, if you're looking to buy a different property and we just need to put it, you know, put this back on the market, that's fine too. So I guess that's, that's kind of where we're at. You know, we just need to know. If you're still wanting this property, if you do, I do need to tell you that the price has gone up. It's not 250, it's 300. Due to some of those expenses that, that we have incurred after a mom's death and. And the other people that are actually involved. So. So I guess that's, I guess that's just where we're at.
Well. Well, I guess, you know, I know initially when we started this process. I mean, you guys were asking for 300,000. And I made. A offer to you guys, you know, accepted the 250. I guess what I'm hearing is y'all have exhausted. Additional $50,000 from that time period. I mean, I guess that's your call, you know? So we probably, I don't know, we have probably have a. Option to counter that. Are y'all willing to negotiate or that's your firm of?
Charles, actually, initially, we wanted more than that for that property. But more than, than even 300. So, you know, and like I said. We're not trying to take advantage of the city and, but at the same time, we have to do what we think is right. And, you know, what benefits our family as well. And, and since that time, you know, since mom has died, there are, you know, we, there are some legal fees involved. And like I said, there's, there's some other things that you, that you don't know about and it's not, it's not important and I don't even want to get into it. But, but it does, it does affect that. And so. So, yeah, I mean, that's where we're at. And listen, we understand if you, you know, if you don't want to do that and you can't do, you know. We understand that, you know, every, everybody has a, has their limit. And I understand, you know, if the city has their limit, you know. If you can't do it, you just can't. But that's, that's just where we're at. And, and that's why we didn't. You know, Carol and I wanted to get together because we don't want to drag this out. We don't want to string y'all along, you know, at the same time, we don't want to be strung along either. We just wanted to say, here, you know, here it is, here's what we can do. And, and if you, you want to do that, then, you know, we'll, we'll. Deal with the contract, you know, the things in the contract after we can negotiate that. However, you know, as far as the title insurance and surveys, you know, all those things that go into those. Real estate contracts.
Mayor Charles, this is Alderman.
Yes, Deborah.
I do question if, I'm just, you know, just from what we were under the understanding, and this is to Carol and Dana. That we were understanding that we were waiting for y'all's signature. Whenever your mom passed away. Is, I mean, is there a reason why y'all didn't sign whenever y'all had the paperwork? Or was there a problem?
I called Charles three times. I'm sorry. This is Carol. I called three times to let y'all know mom was going downhill. And the paperwork from the title company had called me and said that they were ready. But I never heard back, other than y'all were checking into it.
Carol, I mean. I think I remember calling you and telling you it made you an offer of 300, I mean, 225,000. Because I felt like, you know, we was trying to get it resolved before your mother, you know, passed. And I said that with the city could afford that much right now, we could pay it rather than having to wait. Until it was approved by USDA, which, you know, was going to take longer. And I remember that offer, but, and I know you said at that time, you were going to talk to your brothers and sisters, but. I remember that conversation.
Yeah, she, she did. She talked to us and, and we weren't willing to negotiate down at all. And. And so that's, you know, that's where that was whenever the, after that contract, I guess, had expired. And then, you know, you had offered the 225 and we just weren't willing to do that.
Can I say something?
Sure, Cindy.
And I don't know if, you know, if this matters or not, but Tommy and I have been buying up some land. And we paid 385,000 for 320 acres of irrigated land. And signed the papers and did that in January. So, I mean, you're looking at, and this is land with wells and circle systems, you know, that kind of stuff. And I, this isn't but what, 100 and something acres?
130.
Yeah. So, I mean. And, and honestly, we paid too much. That figure's like $2,300 an acre. Where, you know, we paid $1,200 an acre. So, I mean, really, the 250 is, is a premium price for that land.
Well, I mean, again, I, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, we don't want to argue with anybody or anything. I mean, that's just. I know, I, I know, I know what, I know, I understand what you're trying to do and you're trying to, you know, show us that this is, you know, it's relative and I get it, I get it. But again, you know, when we have talked to some people, they said, you know, you, you have to sell your property what is, you know, best and highest use. So, I mean, at this point, honestly, the, the best highest use is not necessarily farmland. It's.
Oh, no.
Yeah. So. So that, I mean, it's, it's commercial in this, in this situation. Or, you know, for municipal utilities or however you want to classify it. But. And like I said, we, we understand if, if the city is not willing to do it. I mean, I, we get it. It's not. You know, we're just sort of at a point where if we sell it, fine. If we don't, fine. We're, we're okay with that. And we know that y'all have to discuss that and y'all have to talk about it and do whatever. You know, we'll, you can either reach out to Carol or you can reach out to me as well. You know, later, I understand that. I mean, y'all can't just make a decision. You know, y'all have to discuss it and that's, that's certainly understandable. So, and that, that's really what we wanted to, to let y'all know. And. Oh, go ahead.
I asked a question, Cindy. This is Cindy. So Carol, when you made, when you accepted the offer, there were other family didn't know?
That offer was between me and mom offering it at that point. Mom was still cognitive and had agreed. But.
Well, I knew too.
Dana knew as well, yes.
Well, I was just wondering, because I mean, it acts like, you know, I knew we had only talked to you and now Dana's involved is why I'm asking how if.
Like I said, Dana knew, mom knew, and, and Wayne even knew, but there are some other. Individuals involved now.
Yeah.
Well, and it's not just that. I mean, there is some additional expense.
Yeah.
And I'll be honest, it's not. But yeah, and it doesn't cost $50,000 to probate a will. So that, that's not the, that's not all of it. So. I don't want to mislead.
No, no, I knew it wasn't. I knew that wasn't the case because I've been open to that. So if you were going to try to say that, I knew that wasn't the case.
No, no. I'm saying there's a lot of certain expenses.
I just wanted to know if Carol had the authority to make the deal then, how come she can't?
She did, yeah. She did then. She was the power of attorney.
But she's not the executor of the will now?
She is, she is. But, but, you know, I mean, Cindy, we're all, we're, you know, we're a close family and we don't, you know, we're not going to do anything without.
Well, I was just wondering why, you know. Carol made the deal and I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, it wasn't something, maybe we were misleading back when, when we, she took the offer.
Yeah. Now, now she had, she had full authority to do that. And. And that was fine.
In fact, I believe Dana, you was on the phone with me and Charles that day, wasn't you?
Yeah, I was one time. I'm not sure.
That was the day mom fell over her pelvic bone. May the 23rd, mom fell and broke her pelvic bone.
And again.
Yes.
How long did y'all have the paperwork before your mother passed away?
Well, I signed the contract November the 15th. I called the city in January to find out what was going on because apparently nothing had been started. And that's when they finally, the title company started asking me for information.
Yeah, I mean, the title company should have reached out and gave everybody, both parties, a closing date. I mean, that's what we were, you know, we kept waiting on. And Carol was concerned because she said, look, I mean, I think, I, I think mom.
Mom was not doing good.
Think she may die before this contract is signed. And, you know. Oh, go ahead.
Just again, this again, it's all Deborah Middleton. So y'all never had paper to sign?
There was never, oh, go ahead, Carol.
They had contacted me. I'm trying to find my email, told me that they'd gotten everything that they needed. And wanted to know what needed to be done next and never heard anything else.
So Deborah, just to answer, you know, I mean, usually when you sign, you know, those contracts, those initial contracts, then you get, you know, that review at least, you know, at least, what is it, 24, 48 hours before you sign? You know, none of that was ever done. Now, I don't know, Carol, what title company was that? Because they, they legally have to do that. And, but I mean, I don't even know that we ever even got a closing date, anything. Okay, that, yes.
Who, who was the title company?
I'm getting on my email.
I think it was a, I mean, we didn't pick the title company, did we?
Was it Permian Basin?
Permian Basin, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I know we didn't pick that title company. I don't know who picked the title company.
We probably did because the other one would have been a year getting anything done.
I, I don't know. I think maybe we did. But anyway, I mean, I, I remember. Routinely kept calling Carol, wanted to know what the holdup was. We could done everything we could do on our end. And she was telling me it was with Bonnie. And she was, she had everything. She was just, I don't know what she was waiting on, but it was always, we was waiting on Bonnie. So, I mean, we, we couldn't do anything until you guys reacted. We were set to stand still. That's why I kept calling, wanting to know what was the holdup.
What, what was she waiting on? What, what was the title company waiting on Bonnie for?
I don't know, but that was, that was.
They, Bonnie had gotten, Bonnie had found everything that the title company could not find at the courthouse. Because they couldn't find that affidavit. Oh, granddad's son, grandma taking over from granddad.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Bonnie had filed it and she had to get a copy to them. And all that stuff.
But she got it before the contract expired though. Okay. Okay.
I appreciate y'all's answers. Sounds like me as a council. And mayor, we need to have a meeting. Before we can get back to y'all. I mean, I hate that it's, you know, again, but. There are some things that we need to get to the bottom of before we can proceed.
Well. Well, let me say one thing, you know, regardless, you know, there, there may be one option, you know. I don't know if you guys will take less. You got to understand, you will not get the money until this loan slash grant. Is awarded to us. And that could be three months, six months, I don't know, even a year. So y'all need to consider that because, you know, like, that was like, I made the offer of less than the 250. Because I figured you wanted your money sooner. Now, I don't know, you just keep that in mind that y'all want, asking for $300,000 right now. I know it, this city cannot afford it. I'm asking you right now, I mean, what's the least you guys will take if the city could pay for it?
Well, I mean, Charles, again, we're, we're not, we don't. We're not in any hurry. I'll just, I'll just put it that way. I mean, if it, if it didn't come for a year, you know, when we signed a contract, if the money didn't come for a year, I mean, that's fine. None of us are in a hurry. And nobody's, you know. Nobody's desperate or anything like that for money. It's just, I think it just comes down to the, to the principle of it and the other things that we had. Going on and. And other circumstances surrounding that, you know, it's just a family matter that we just don't want to get into. But, but anyway, but that, that's the price. Now, and I will tell you this, I mean, if it's something that. If it's something that you, you know, we, we've considered, you know, signing a contract with you for 225 and then you pay the rest, you know, in a year or something like that. That's, that's something that we would consider. But, you know, if, if.
I don't see where that would benefit us at all. I'm sorry. But, but anyway. I think at this point, we probably need to get with the council. We need to hash out what our best options are in trying to get back with you guys. We can't make a decision though, seem like tonight. But we know what you guys are asking for. So now we need to decide is what we need to do. So.
Yes, sir. I understand.
No problem.
Okay. And we appreciate your time. We appreciate everybody's time. And, and we hope everybody stays well and nobody catches this nasty COVID.
Thank y'all. Bye. Thank you, Dana and Carol.
All right, you're welcome. We'll talk to you later. Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
I guess it's, I guess we need a motion to officially adjourn the meeting.
Can we set a date for another special meeting? We need to get this taken care of.
We can take care of you right now. You tell, I mean, I'm, I'm ready any day. I'll do it tomorrow if it could. But you just tell me whenever y'all are ready, you know, we still have to do the 72-hour thing. So, I mean, today's Monday, y'all want to try to do it this week? You know, personally, I think we, I think we really need to. Handle it quickly as possible.
Can I ask who all is still online?
Ask Dan. You can look yourself.
There, there is only one person. I'm assuming it's Renee and she's muted. It says Samsung. Other than that, you can see traces in the names though.
There, she just can't see her.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
But, but Dan can mute them anyway. Dan, you can mute everybody but the council.
Well, not, I haven't, everybody's in control of their own image.
I can get off. It's not a problem. I'm gone. Bye.
Okay, go ahead, Deborah.
I guess my question is, if they're, you know, they're saying that they were waiting on us. How did we get the $4 million loan if we don't have property bought? How would we approve for that loan for the water sewer plant if we do not have the land bought?
No, when, you know, when we, when, when we provided them with everything, at that time. They agreed to sell us the property for that amount. That's what we was going on. That they were selling for. And they just based that on, so y'all still going to get the property. That's why that was continued. It was just, never was a, you know. There was all, there was just a, we had, we had a contract in place. It just so happened her mother passed and it, it was no invited at that time. But the contract was in place.
But what, what they're telling us though, this is, this is where I'm confused. They're telling us that that contract expired in February. And their mom didn't pass away for two months after that, or I don't even know. I don't know the date when she passed away. But that the contract expired February, long before the mother passed away. I, I just, that what they're telling us, and I guess we're hashing out, it's kind of a moot point, but it's a $50,000 moot point. Where, how did this happen? Where did, who dropped the ball? Why, why weren't, if we were in contract, why wasn't that contract locked in and signed? What, who, who's waiting on who?
It wasn't us. They, they would never, every time I talked to Carol, she would always say something, Bonnie has it. And I mean, I would call her frequently. She would never, I mean, I mean, we, we was on top of everything. Our lawyer was involved. He was guiding us, telling us what to do. We, we just what happened. But you know, I knew they was going to be asking for more money. That's what they wanted initially. It was $300,000. And I know that, but let me say this. I mean, I know they jacking the price up, but. I recommend we better give them that because I guarantee you, if we try to buy property anywhere else, we don't be playing twice that much when we get to having to run lines and everything is gonna be new. And they know, like she said, it, it's not about the farm values, but the commercials, about the need, they know, they know they have us. You know, it's a big advantage for us to have that property and they know it. So I, I'm, I'm recommending we better, and I think we'll do it quickly, I don't think we ought to fool around with it because we do, it could cost us twice that much. And that, I mean, I, I know it's ideal right where it is. You know, we have to do something else, when you get to running lines and new pub facilities, it's gonna cost us. We, we just gonna have to accept the fact that, that we think we didn't take advantage of. I don't, I think we need to make a decision and go with it quickly, I don't think we need to wait.
Mayor, this is Ruben.
Yes.
Uh, can I interrupt? Dan, can you let Shannon Watson in? She's trying to get in.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I'm sorry. And, uh, another question, what was the offer I missed? I guess I, oh, oh, then a bad spot, I didn't, I didn't get to hear that, the offer. What was it again?
She wanted 300,000, they wanted $300,000 versus 3, 250.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
That's what they initially asked for. I mean, you know, even four, four years ago when they came, tried, made it, made a presentation, they were asking for that much and they, and I just think, you know, I think what they have done, they've done their homework and they found out that they know how valuable it is to us. They know the location is what they've been known, so I'm, I'm, I think we need to really consider this and make the decision fast because it's worth it, even though we know that the, the land is not worth it for any kind of farmland, but the value of it is the location.
Cindy Durham, ah, great, great, um, Charles, but, uh, you know, it's, it's just frustrating that people, you know, well, they don't honor their word anymore.
Yeah.
And I know, but I, I'll bet you if we had, if we talked to Permian and we got a timeline, I'll bet you, whoops, I left. I don't know where we at, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, I'll bet you we could find out that it was not our fault. I don't know what happened.
It was not our fault, we didn't do anything wrong. It, not one thing. We was on top of everything because I was with Dan all the time, had to talk to our lawyer, he tells what our next move were. When we've done what we needed to do, it was not our fault at all.
I don't, I don't believe it because I've done too many deals with Permian Basin Abstract. They're on top of their stuff. I mean, they are and, uh, but, uh, if anything, it was Bonnie Erickson because she can be kind of slow with things too, but, but anyway, well, I mean, whatever, I do agree, we probably need the land. I just, I just hate people to back me in a corner, but.
Yeah, you know, you know, I mean, I, I do too, I mean, I, I hate, I hate to accept that, but you, if you look at the whole situation, but I can tell you, I mean, that, as I hate, that is a bargain, bargain. And if we, if we have to move to somewhere else, you just.
Oh, yeah.
Just kind of think of the expense it would be to run lines through the city. And that, that just.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
You, you, I mean, it's, it's, it's bad, sad that we have, we have been, seem like taken advantage of, but on the other side, uh, we just, they just got the.
Wow.
Hang in, so we don't have no, I don't think we have a choice. I, I don't think we need to wait long. I think we need to make an agreement and then give them what, I think, you know what, the first thing I'd do, I would make a count off of two seven five, just to make sure they accept the 300,000. Maybe, maybe, maybe they will go up in the high. I mean, I mean, we're open for discussion, while we talking, this, this still legit, this is on the same, same topic.
Dan's asking.
I'd just like to offer you a little information. Getting ready for this today, I looked over the loan documents and all. The USDA has committed to reimburse us for the sale of that property, they've written it in at $275,000. So we would be able to roll that into the loan, that's part of the $4 million loan that they're talking about. So there is adequate funding and I just wanted you to be aware of that while you're considering this, and that's all I have to say.
Hey, Dan, uh, Dan, why you own that 70, you know, they did say they would take 225,000 then and the rest when they, uh, when everything was settled. I mean, that's better than giving them the whole 300,000 right now.
Yeah, that would be, or you could offer them $25,000 for a firm commitment and they will wait until the loan goes through and all the closing is done and the, the 275 at that time.
Yeah, we could do that too.
So you have some options, I just wanted you to be aware. And as far as.
I really think we need to nail it down because I don't want to give them no more, too much more time to think about this. I think we need to take our licks or, that's my opinion, like you guys, whichever which one to do.
I, I agree. I, I know what they're talking about when they don't want to get involved because I heard trying to keep the boy that passed away, uh, and they discovered they couldn't do that, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Comments, more comments?
Uh, this is, uh, Alderman Kendra Sellers. And, uh, I think we just need to, uh, I mean, you can counter, I, I'm fairly certain there, that's not gonna work, but, I, I have talked to Danae and, you know, they're, they are set in on that price. But, uh, I, I think we should just accept it, move on. Uh, we gotta get, we gotta get moving on this, we gotta get something locked in, get, get it done, get the ball rolling and we don't have time for waste.
Renee, are, are you still there? What, what's your, what are your opinions? Renee?
Mr. Pitchers.
Uh, I guess she, that she's, I mean, I know she's there, I can't hear. Renee, you there? But anyway, I agree with what Kendra said is what I was trying to say myself, I think, I think, you know, we probably think we are getting ripped off or whatever. But if you look at the whole situation, we better jump on it because, I mean, there is, there's, there's unknown expenses and you have to try to relocate a facility like that. I mean, you know, a lot of, but it's, there's enough unknown expenses, we're trying to deal with 300,000. I mean, I, I have been involved in this type of stuff, though. Unknown, they put a, they put a deal, they contract, and when you get through, you know, they, 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 they open up for robbery. So we need to look at this real seriously and I think we need to make them an offer. So much right now.
They're trying to call you back.
$200,000.
Okay.
Okay. Renee's gonna see if she can get back in for you.
Okay.
There she is.
Renee, are you there?
Whoops.
Can you hear us Renee? She can hear you.
Can't hear. Well, they show on there.
Do we need a motion for this?
Well, let's listen to Renee a minute, she comes up. Dan, just sent out another invite?
Yeah, I can try that.
May have to call her.
She's having some trouble, I guess, with her audio, she's there, she can hear us.
I, I didn't see, I didn't see her being on.
Well, I see her, she's there. Uh, she can hear you, sir.
She can't talk?
No, sir, she's having trouble with her audio. She can hear you though.
Well, I would like to hear her answer, but I know, I've talked to her before about it. She was, uh, oh, we would always do it, I mean, whatever they offer, she feel like she, we should accept it, so. Well, you know, at this point, you know, we can't hear her. So if we, I think we will need a motion, I like to have a motion because this is an important decision and it needs to be recorded because it's something that we, you know, we have to live with. So I'll do, like have a, I would entertain a motion at this time and a second.
This is Alderman Kendra Sellers and I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, purchase the mailer land at the agreed price of the $300,000.
This is Alderman Cindy Durham, I second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, all in favor, please state your name as Alderman Cindy Durham. Alderman Kendra Sellers.
Aye.
Alderman Deborah Milton. Alderman Ruben Weiss.
Aye.
Alderman Shannon Watson.
Aye.
Are there any more discussions? Since there are no.
I just want to make sure that we're offering 300,000, we're not paying them 25,000 upfront. It'll go through the process, the loan, they understood that, that it may be up to a year. But as long as we get a contract stating that they will accept 300,000, am I right?
Okay, let me say one thing, don't you think it would be better if we lock it down, we offer 25,000?
That's what a contract is for. I mean, they're willing, that's what they offered, that's what they asked for, that's what we're giving them. I think we should lock it down with the contract.
Okay, that's fine. That's what this discussion is about, so.
Does everybody else have an opinion on that?
Uh, I'm on board with you Deborah.
Okay. Okay, uh, after the discussion, motion was stand, we will offer them $300,000 since there's no more discussion, motion passed. Okay. I thank you guys tonight. Uh, I think it was a productive meeting, something that was necessary. So I guess at this time, I will entertain someone making a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn Deborah Middleton.
I second Ruben Weiss.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to adjourn, motion passed. Hope everyone have a good, safe evening.
Okay, y'all too. See y'all in a week or so.
Good luck Cindy.
Thank y'all.
Hello.
Thanks.